In the legislature?
No.
No, no. There's a group of cities that according to CJ.
And we are live.
No, no. It's entirely different. It's dealing with the land use, you know, 2040.
That. I saw the letter that the lady had written. It's pretty well done here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There was another side. There's another sidebar that identified this group of cities and we're in it.
Okay.
And I just wonder if you have representatives. I'll try to find it. It's citizens. Land development. Big deal. That's.
Okay, everyone, it's 6:30. I'm going to call to order the City of Prospect Special Meeting of the City Council. It's Monday, July 3, 2023, July 3, 2023, 6:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is consider going into executive session for deliberations on the appointment of city council member pursuant to KRS 61.810, Ren 15, excuse me, FG. Is there a motion for the council to go into executive session? Yes. Mr. Evans has made that motion.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose. The ayes have it. We're now go into executive session. The council is going to remain in this room, so we'll ask everyone else to step out. It will start up at 7:00 PM. Even if the executive session ends earlier, we'll wait till 7:00 to start the reconvene. Thanks for being here.
Mayor, will the mics be on?
I'll ask Ron.
Yeah, Ron needs to cut those because it's not supposed to. Can't go on the web.
Patience.
You want us to turn them off or?
No, he will.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, boss, you should be good to go.
Okay, thank you. We're still.
And I'll remind everybody that we are still live, so. Watch what you say.
It's integral to our position.
Okay, everyone, it's about seven or eight minutes after seven. The meeting began at six thirty and the council immediately went into executive session. To put away on the process for appointing, going through this process in this meeting to select the city council member. The first item on the agenda now that we're out of executive session is comments. And citizens and understand, I think Lee maybe signed up to speak, so Lee can he'll step up to the slide.
Lee Tucci, W three oh one Fox Place, resident of Prospect for thirty two years. I'm addressing the issue of selection of next council person. But you have a lot of qualified people to choose from, and we have a long history of having very qualified people, but I wanted to talk about. And Shulhar.
He has withdrawn his name from.
Has it withdrawn his name? That's my comments, except that he's a great guy, does very well on poll station.
Well, thank you. Herb's a leading citizen of Prospect, so we appreciated him putting his name forward, but he. He specifically commented that we got excellent candidates to come forward and he's willing to permit them to be considered. So appreciate you coming in. I know Herb appreciates that, too. If there are no other comments from citizens, I'm going to give a report, mayor's report, and I'll try to run through this. Quickly, sidewalk repairs have now been completed in Hunting Creek, Ennis Brook and the Landings. We received a very nice email today from residents of the Landings who said, Dear Mayor Farnesley and City Council, thank you for the repair of our sidewalks on the landing. I so appreciate that they are now safe for our daily walks to Pabigun. I'm sure those pushing strollers are appreciated, too. Also, it's very exciting to watch the creation of the tree sculpture in the park. Harley seems to be a master of the chainsaw. So I thought that's pretty nice email. I thought I would share it with you. With regard to the city's move to change the trash pickup from two days per week to one day per week, that starts today. And notice has been sent by email, Rumkey sent flyers to everyone outlining that process. The response we've received has been overwhelmingly positive. So that's a good news and we'll see how that goes. With regard to recycling, the funding is in place for us to consider weekly recycling at the back door. However, my plan is beginning September one to move to. Picking up the recycling at the curb every two weeks. And Rumkey will provide sixty five gallon capacity rolling carts. The savings on an annual basis, if we do that just on the recycling will be two hundred eleven thousand dollars, five hundred annually. That's seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty five dollars per month. I've asked two of our fellow citizens, Louis Fowler and Randy Gibson, to organize a team of volunteers to assist. Residents who may need help getting a cart down to the curb and back up to their homes later in the day. So we're going to put that in place. We're going to organize those volunteers and we'll give notice to our citizens. At the July seventeen meeting, I'll present an amended budget for first, I'll pose an amended budget. It'll need a motion in a second, but it will reflect the revised revenue figures. That would, we'll also have, we'll also have a second reading on the ordinance to create a capital budget. And hopefully we'll have a first reading of a proposed capital budget for us to move forward. I'll give an update for those who followed the discussion on whether this year's budget should include funds for a police to buy a new vehicle. And that was a point of some discussion that that problem has been solved. A council member suggested that we look at. Last year's budget, last fiscal year, which ended Friday. This was Friday morning. The suggestion was look at the budget for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. And see if the funds are there and the funds were there. So the vehicle was purchased on Friday afternoon and that took care of that issue. On Friday afternoon, John Evans, Sarah Heinz and I met with the chief and the assistant chief. We had a terrific meeting. We not only learned in detail the rationale for the department scheduling, schedule for replacing vehicles. But I think we increased the high regard we have for Jeff, Tony and our police officers generally. We received a lovely letter from Gustavo Torres thanking the city for its support with regard to his new restaurant. I've emailed that to. To council members and we'll attach a copy to the minutes. In Little Hunting Creek Park, I've already mentioned the chainsaw sculpture that's being put together or being created. Which is going to be, I think, a real landmark. And it's gratifying to see each day the extensive use that the playground is getting. A lot of parents, grandparents and children are enjoying it. This evening's business is the election interviews and election of new council member. I want to thank the citizens who put their names forward and those individuals are John Clark, Scott Dickens. Christian Furman, Sandra Leonard, Terry Rankorn. I've already mentioned that Herb Schulehfer has withdrawn his name. So at this point, we'll move into. Remarks from our, from our candidates. We're going to go in alphabetical order. And when you're asked to speak, if you'll step up to the lecture, that'll be important for Chris Furman, who's, I think, in Washington DC and joining us by WebEx. She'll only hear you if you're speaking into a microphone. These microphones, we've learned, don't have anything to do with what goes on in the room. They're only important for the people participating by WebEx. The general format we're going to follow is we'll allow about eight minutes per candidate. You'll, you'll receive a list of questions from one of the council members. And then you'll be, you'll have time to speak, talk about the things you want to talk about, address the questions that have been posed. I think the council will perhaps redirect you if you haven't commented on, on one of the questions. So you don't have to remember all of them necessarily, but I think they're pretty straightforward in what you would expect. In people being considered for a position on the council. At about six minutes, we'll, we'll wave at you so that you know you're approaching the end and if there are things you want to say to, to wrap up, you'll have that opportunity. So we don't want to overburden you with formality, but I think it's good. We have some structure and I think the council's developed. A reasonable, a reasonable structure for, for the, for the meeting and for this process. So with that said, in alphabetical order, we'll ask John Clark, John, if you'd step up.
And I'll ask Sarah. Sarah is going to let you know what the count it's on.
Is it on?
Okay.
So we got a green light on the back if it's on.
So before we get started, John, I'm just going to go ahead and pose some of the questions we'd like to have addressed. So first, obviously tell us about yourself. Second, why are you interested in serving on the council? What would you like to see the council accomplish? And how do you perceive the role of a council person? So once again, if, you know, to Doug's point, if for some reason, you know, it's not covered and we still have time, we'll probably redirect. So that's kind of gives you a baseline of some of the information we'd like to receive in the summary. Thank you.
Ready to begin. John, you're up.
Okay. So tell us about yourself. Lived in Prospect since two thousand and one. Moved here from Lexington where I was with the UK and was in banking there. And then I was in banking in Frankfurt, Kentucky for the Bankers Bank for thirty one years there, so. Spent a lot of time making loans and running a bank there at the, at the end of my career and retired in two thousand and twenty. My wife and I live in Sutherland now. And I've been on the HOA board there since two thousand and nine, nine years as president. Where I learned a lot about Prospect, the code of ordinances and how to deal with people and lots of good things. Built relationships with chief and Ron Kundif and, and members of the council over those years. What was the second question?
Why are you interested in serving on the council? What would you like to see the council accomplish?
Like I said, I've been involved with various aspects of the city government here in Prospect for a number of years. I know all of you guys. And I think that it would be, it'd be good. I think I'm compatible with the council. And we could accomplish a lot of good things. As far as. What we, I think we could accomplish. I think there's three things that are important for a council member. That's to be a good listener, number one. And to be a good steward of our money that we have. And one of the other important things about being a council member is maintaining the quality of life. And one of the other important things about being a council member is maintaining the quality of life here in Prospect, which I think is fabulous. We, we've loved living here since we moved here. And I love the quality of life and the way things flow and architecture and everything about it. Next question, sorry.
Oh, no, you're fur.
I didn't.
No, I didn't know you were.
I didn't write them all down.
So what would you like to see the council accomplish? And also, how do you perceive the role of a council person?
Right, okay. Well, the role of the council is what I said, good listener, good steward and strive to maintain the quality of life. A prospect, it's, so. You got another one there for me?
What would you like to see the council accomplish? Are there anything specific?
Well, I think the council does a great job with what they do now. I think that one of the things I would like to see accomplished is the US Highway 42 project come to fruition. I understand that's going to be maybe five to seven years, but I think that's very important here. And I think that we need to control development that's going on. I know we have two LBG projects out there. I'm not, I'm opposed to both of those as, as proposed. But I'm not opposed to affordable housing at all. So, you know, like I said, I think what I'd like to see the the council accomplish would be to be maintain the quality of life here that we have. And I think it's, I think it's very good. As far as specific goals, I would have to, I'd have to give that some thought other than the ones that I, that I gave you.
So John, you've got time left. You can, if you've got other comments you'd like to make, you're doing great. But if you're, if you feel like you've covered everything, that's fine, too.
Well, I think that's pretty much it. I think you all know me fairly well. Anybody have any questions that they want to ask me other than? Okay.
In your years with the HOA, did that cause you to become familiar with Prospect's code of ordinances?
Oh, absolutely.
Tell me a little bit.
Well, one of my first jobs on the HOA was architectural review. So I've evolved into being chairman of that. So there's a lot of interplay between architectural review and what's allowed in the code of ordinances. So I have a lot of back and forth with, with Rick Wilson in trying to get people get their project done and stay within the boundaries of A, the code of ordinances and B, our deed restrictions. So one other thing I would mention about my banking career was I was very involved in budgeting and, and, and finance. So I think that would be a, an asset.
Are you on your HOA board now?
I am on the HOA board now. I'm not president. I was able to hand that off to Mike Lindsay, thankfully. So we have an excellent board. And I'm kind of sit back and, you know, just kind of advise a little bit. Anybody else have a question?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yes, John.
Okay. Put your name forward, but also thanks for being the first to get up and try to remember all the questions.
Well, and I don't think I answered that question. I want to serve the community as best I can. So this was an opportunity to do that. And I've done several other things with, with the city. So this was a good opportunity to further that cause.
One of the things that I think you left off and maybe in the papers here somewhere, but the the ordinance that has to do with.
Nuisances.
Natural health, Kate.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, chairman of the work group for the chapter 92 revision, which there's several council people that are working on that and have done a lot of, a lot of work in Sandberg as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration.
Well, within the time, so you did a great job. Okay, Scott Dickens.
Good evening. Also, thank you for going first. I'm Scott Dickens. I live at 9506 US Highway 42. Two driveways in that direction on the other side of the Laban family. Bought that property in 1988 when I was 28 years old. Best decision I ever made in my life. Neff's liquor store was right there. Lynn Dixie over there. Sutherland Farms was a cow pasture. Changed a little bit since then. But I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come here and address you and, and answer questions. My wife and I are now empty nesters. We have four sons who were born and raised down the road. And as of last month, we have them all out of the house. And so before that time, I really was not in position to commit the time and the dedication that is required of a position on the council. So that's why I put my name in the hat. My 94-year-old mother lives across the street on Carsall Court in the Storypoint Assistant Living Community. Although on any given day, she's maybe not sure if he's living in Prospect, but she likes it forever. She thinks she is. So in terms of what I, what I would like to see the council do and what are priorities for me personally are to preserve and protect and invest in what makes Prospect so special. It's essential character. It's neighborhood feel. It's outstanding public safety. Thanks in large part to Chief Gerard and his, his crew. Prospect has an extraordinarily low crime rate for a city of, what do we have, 4,500 residents, something like that. We do occasionally have something that weird happens, but it's, they're few and far between. So I think we should continue to, to support our, our police department here in, in all reasonable ways. I really appreciate the fact that we have a reasonable and, and stable tax rate. Appreciate that you all or some of you all actually lowered the rate last year to try to offset around what Jefferson County did and increasing theirs. Who does that? Where do you hear of a, a city reducing their property tax rate? I think that makes Prospect attractive. Our amazing natural resources. We live in Jefferson County where we have homestead parks. We have some amazing parks. Our parks are second to none in Jefferson County. During COVID, I explored the parks a lot with my colleagues. And really came to appreciate them more. And then just the, the resident services that we offer and the community events and activities. Those are things that I think should be the priorities of the council and things that I would hope that council going forward will. Now, unlike maybe all of the other candidates, I don't know any of you and you don't know me. But I hope that's not a disadvantage. I would suggest to you that in a way it may be an advantage because I have no pre-existing alliances or allegiances or histories with anybody which should enable me to act objectively, you know, and independently. I absolutely believe that our council members should work in collaboration with each other and cooperate with one another. But I also think that I would hope that you're encouraged to think independently and to make decisions that are in the best interest of, of our residents. But you don't have to make a, a great blind leap of faith to decide whether or not you think that I could be a good fit on the council because you don't know me. I think you can look at some of my other roles in other organizations and get an idea of whether I'd be a good fit or not. And I'll just name a couple of those for you. Since 1996, my wife and I have been members of Christ Church United Methodist on Brownsville Road, just on the inside of McWherson. It's the largest Methodist church in Kentucky. And I had the privilege of being appointed to serve as a lay leader there. And also as chair of administrative council, which any of you all that ever worked in, you know, for your churches know that they basically conduct the business of church. And there are some challenging, interesting things that happen in churches, big churches, especially in this day and age. But I was honored to then ask to do those things and I think I did them to the best of my abilities. They didn't pick me out, but that way. I, I've been vetted by, well, thanks to the assistance of councilman Scott Reed. I was vetted by the Louisville Metro Council, City Council, three years ago to serve on the civilian review and accountability board. I was reappointed a couple of weeks ago. We meet, we meet once a month for about an hour and a half. And that's, that's an important job. If you're familiar with what they do, but I won't get into it, but ask me questions about it if you wish. For many years I served as a trial commissioner for the Kentucky Bar Association Attorney Discipline System. I was appointed, I think, by the chief justice at that time to do that where lawyers get into problems basically with their clients or ethical rules and that sort of thing. I would be sort of the judge of those hearings.
Scott, about two more minutes.
Okay, great, though. Yeah. And I've also had the privilege of serving three times as special justice on the Supreme Court. You know, it's my hope that my ability to serve successfully in those other roles would alleviate any doubt you may have, any confidence you may have in whether or not I would I'm suited to, to, to work alongside you on this council. I think I would be a valuable asset. My reputation is for being pretty good at analyzing and understanding complex situations and problem solving. I'm very organized. Thanks to my father. I'm very punctual. I've never in my life been penalized for being early to anything. I think my temperament's well-suited for a position on this council. I play nice in the sandbox. If you want to, you know, put it that way. I work hard. No one will ever outwork me or outprepare me and it would be an honor and a privilege to serve alongside you.
Thanks very much, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks again for stepping forward. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris Furman, you're on WebEx. So you're up.
Great, great. Hi, my name is Christian Furman. I'm, I live in Hunting Creek in the Oldham County side of Hunting Creek. I'm a professor of medicine at the University of Louisville. I'm a professor of geriatric medicine and palliative medicine. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I have, I've lived in Hunting, I've, I've lived in Hunting Creek in the same house there and for 18 years. I grew up in Oldham County, went to Oldham County High School and then went away to College of University Miami in Florida and came back to Louisville for medical school and did my geriatric medicine fellowship, my internal medicine residency. I've also been in Louisville my whole life, pretty much. And so I'm really, really excited for this opportunity. And the reason I'm interested in doing this, I mean, I've, I've always had, I've wanted to serve. I think that's why I work for the university and not in private practice. And, and, and right now I'm doing a health and aging policy fellowship in Washington DC. So thank you for letting me do this on WebEx. And part of that, part of being in Washington DC has made me realize, you know, really to make the most difference, you know, yeah, you can do it on a national scale. I'm working for Congress now and helping with health policy. But really, you know, the local is where you can make the, the biggest impact. And like everybody said, you know, we live in a great community and, you know, some ideas of how to even make it better. And what I would be interested in is, you know, first, just, you know, maintaining the course. I mean, you know, we have a great community. We have great public safety. We have great livability and great fiscal responsibility. So I want to continue all those great things. But also I'm really interested in some of the joint ventures we can do from, with private corporations and nonprofits and kind of bringing people together. I was a Girl Scout leader. My, my daughter, I have a 22-year-old and a 24-year-old. They went to, you know, North Oldham and went through all the public schools, Goshen Elementary and then North Oldham Middle School, North Oldham High School. And I was a Girl Scout leader for a group of girls from, from north. And, you know, there's so much opportunity to bring people together, like, and I'm a geriatrician, so I specialize in older adults. And so having like older adults and like the Girl Scouts, you know, do things together. I was the medical director at the Exceptional Senior Living there in Prospect. I think it's changed names now, but you know, it was just mentioned there on Carla, Carla Court on the assisted living. And, you know, we have such a wealth of wisdom and a lot of these, we have, we have a nursing home there, you know, river, I think it's River's Edge. And bringing together older adults, younger people, there's so much ways that we can have the private and nonprofit and work together. So, and all that would be just improve the quality of life for people in, in Prospect. And the third thing is, you know, you know, having Prospect being a model for an age-friendly city. Louisville has become an age-friendly city and can we do this for Prospect? You know, we, the, the main, the mean age in Prospect is 51. So we have a, an older community. And anything that we do to help older adults helps the whole community. So just for example, like you said, paving the sidewalk, right? Or having those cutouts on the sidewalk so wheelchairs can get down. Well, that helps strollers get down, right? So, you know, if we can help older adults have a great life, then we help everybody have a great life. So those are some of the specific things I'm interested in doing. And just to kind of go back to why I'm interested in serving. I think, you know, you, you, I'm at a stage, you know, other people mentioned, you know, empty nesters and you're, you have all this time that you, you know, you used to be doing a lot with your kids and to give back and use that time to help other people. And the role, I think, you know, I kind of talked about what I want to accomplish, but the role of a member of the council. I think, you know, I'm, part of what we do in geriatrics and palliative care is work with interdisciplinary teams and bring people together. So, you know, bringing, I'd like to be able to bring everybody together to, and, and part of that, bringing people together is, is listening and making sure we're meeting people and compromising and, you know, somebody wants this, somebody wants this. The surgeon wants this, the patient wants this, the family wants this and bringing everybody together. So, you know, I'm, I feel like I have that skill set where I can listen and bring people together to accomplish the same goal. So I feel like I could, I could contribute in that way. So I think those are the big things about me and what I'm interested in. Were there other, maybe for other people, if I didn't miss something or the questions that people have?
Chris, I might ask a question. So you're in Washington on a fellowship. How long does that last?
Yes, I meant to say that. I'm glad you said that. I will return to Prospect the end of, end of July. So August 1st, I'll be back at home. And yeah, we have our house there still in Hunting Creek. And our daughter was, has, has been there off and on the last year. So, yeah, so I'll be moving. We, we didn't sell our house. Our, our house is still there. We, we're renting an apartment in Washington DC. So the fellowship could be full-time in person or part-time. And so I chose to do the full-time in person. So my husband and I relocated to DC and then we'll be moving back the end of the month.
You still got a little time. If there's anything else you want to say or if there are any other questions from, from the council. We, we appreciate you again, putting your name forward and participating and we all got better with virtual meetings during COVID and.
Yes, yes. Well, you know, it's been, it's been amazing to live in Prospect, raise my kids in Prospect and feel to give back and to continue the great things we're doing. I'd be happy to be a part of it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Next is Sandra Leonard. So Sandra, Laura Sherf.
Hello, I'm Sandra Leonard. I live at 7302 Edgemore Place, which is in the Sutherland subdivision. And like John Clark, I know all of you. My biography is simple. I've lived here for 25 years. Prior to that, I've lived in a lot of different parts of the United States, but I was in California for almost 30 years. And while I was there, I was school district administrator, went to law school at nights and the last portion of the time I was there, I had my own law practice. And unlike the gentleman who I had an interesting conversation with who'll come after me, I never did any criminal law. So I can't, I can't give you any good stories at all. Why I'm interested in serving, I have been serving for a very long time. By accident, when I first moved here, there were, there was a legal notification of a development that was going to take place behind my house and I had no clue what it meant. And so I came into City Hall and talked to Ann Sims, who in case some of you don't know her, she knew everything and she was incredibly competent. When I walked out of here, I knew more than I ever wanted to know and I was already involved. She co-opted me into starting to work up in the library. I ended up getting a temporary appointment somewhere. Um, I ended up getting a temporary appointment similar to the one you're doing tonight in two thousand and four, which is the first time I was on the city council. And then I got another one of those in two thousand and six. After that, I was elected and then continuously until now on the city council. I, like everybody else who's here, I think Prospect is special. I think that there are not a lot been in a lot of places. There are not a lot of places like Prospect. It's a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place to raise children. It's safe at a point in time where just watching television every morning lets you know that other places aren't safe. And part of the reason for that is when we were founded in nineteen seventy-four, there were two primary motivations. By the way, we were founded as the tornadoes grew in seventy-four. So if you ever want to write a book about us, founded in a tornado. Anyway, um, the two primary things that they worried about, and I think have been done beautifully since then, were public safety. They didn't talk about back then leasing. They talked about something that would allow them, they were having vandalism problems, serious vandalism problems. And they wanted to do something that would allow them to not have those issues. That concern evolved into our police force, and we're one of the few small cities in Jefferson County that has a very effective police force. A lot of the others either use Metro or they've got contract workers. The other thing that they were worried about was trash. If you don't have an organized way of approaching your refuse, then you end up, which they did, they would sit up there at the clubhouse or at the um clubhouse at the golf course, and they would notice all these trash trucks coming. And what they wanted to do was something where they could do a coordinated pickup with a single carrier. So the two reasons we insist are safety and trash. I want you to know that I'll take the trash thing seriously, and I am currently the Jefferson County League of Cities appointee to the Jefferson County Waste Management Advisory Committee, and we deal with the policymaking for trash pickup throughout Jefferson County. I think it's very important that somebody from a suburban city be there, because our needs are not the same as Louisville's at all. And had we not been there, what they were going to do was they were going to take all of Jefferson County, divide it into districts. They would have bid out the district, and if you were in that district, you would have had to reduce the low-end carrier they got. So there's been a lot of activity in the last five years to protect our ability to make our own decisions. In terms of what I'd like to see in the future, I'd like to accomplish, I'd like to keep things going that are going well, but I'd also like to plan for the future. I'd like to have us look at what do we want to be doing in twenty forty-three. John Clark mentioned the US Forty-Two Project. That's one component of it. Another component is to take a serious look at some of our ordinances, because we need to plan for, and somebody else mentioned this, what kind of development are we going to have in our commercial area? Right now, those ordinances need some serious deliberation so that we can get ready for a future. These little brown strip malls right across from us were built in seventy-four. It doesn't take a lot of genius to realize they're not going to be there in ten years, and we need to be prepared for that. Another area I think we need to take a serious look at is annexation. When subdivisions would come online, they would want to be a part of Prospect, because it gave them protection. It gave them a coordinated trash pick. It gave them the community that we like here. Okay, but what did that do? That gave us boundaries that don't tend to make sense in some cases. We need to take a look at what we can do to protect our city going forward. And in order to do that, it takes some analysis.
Sandra, about two more minutes.
Thank you. In terms of the final um thing that you asked, what is the role of a council member? I think the role of a council member is simple. It's to represent all of the residents of the city. No factions, not where you live, but all members of the city. And I think one way that I was impressed with your budget deliberations, because again, I think that that is one of the serious components of a council member. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. Give me a question.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We appreciate it. Okay. Terry Rankhorn is next up. Thanks, Terry, for putting your name forward and for coming in to speak with us.
Of course. Miss Times, gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity. And I would say at the very beginning, being the last person, it's clear, Sandra, John, Scott, whoever, whoever the council picks, it'll be a win for Prospect. But thank you for myself for giving me this chance to speak to you. So to begin with, uh, my name is Terry Rankhorn. I spent nine years in military, US Navy submarine service. After that, I spent a short time as a defense contractor, and then a full career, twenty-one years as an FBI agent, retiring here in Louisville. And I want to echo something that Scott said, which really struck home with me. I have dealt with literally dozens of police forces, law enforcement agencies across the country and the world. And I can tell you, there is no finer law enforcement agency that I have ever worked with or met in the Prospect PD. And that's from the professionalism of the officers, the command staff, and in due part to the support that the council gives, for example, the mayor in particular for the, you know, the law enforcement memorial that he uh planned in uh May of this year. And with respect to why did I want to do this, why did I want to uh serve in this capacity? The first time I met uh Doug was in October. I was recovering from COVID, and he came by my own campaigning. And I said, well, tell me your your platform, sir. And he said, support for law enforcement and to keep Prospect a village. My next question was like, what can I do to help you? Because those are entirely within alignment of exactly what I think is important with this. And uh specifically, why would I like to be a part of the city council? Is uh, I, I, like Socrates said, I'm the wisest man in the world because I know I know nothing. I'll tune that just a little bit to say, I know what I know, and I know what I don't know. In issues like Johnson about forty-two, roads and things, I know very little. So I would, I would defer to the more uh to to people with much more experience, people like John, who's run the city, people like Doug, to to get a full understanding of what the facts are before I would make any type of contribution to the deliberation for council. But what I do know is law enforcement, and what I believe would be a very worthwhile endeavor for Prospect is the uh University of Louisville, the University of Louisville has a project on the table for, let's call it crowdsourcing of uh security for communities. Now, what that means is it's sort of like an enhanced neighborhood watch type program, where that uh volunteer citizens, well-vetted volunteer citizens, would review social media leads when crimes occur. It's shocking the amount of times that someone will on social media post, yeah, it was this person over here, or reviewing camera footage, or helping the police to collect data and correlate the data and provide the sworn officers with uh actionable leads, is what we would call it, law enforcement. And I I think this, a program like this would serve as a model for the entire state. It could be done at zero cost to the city of Prospect and without tying up any investigative resources for Prospect PD. And offline, I don't want to eat up the time of the the council now, but I could explain to you exactly how that would be. For example, there are DHS grants for this this type of program. Uh, university is interested in partnering with cities to to do this type of thing. And I'm not talking about putting vigilantes on the street, no, looking for criminals. I'm talking about purely backend assistance to law enforcement with sorting through a lot of investigative noise to get to the actionable information. So that there is something I think I could make a direct contribution to the city of Prospect, and I would love to be able to give back part of my twenty-one years of law enforcement experience and and help the city say, hey, the FBI has this uh program that will partner with you and help this. So DHS has these grants. University of Louisville is interested in part of some of it to effectively make Prospect a no-go zone, zone for the car burglars and home burglars that are plaguing the rest of Jefferson County. And I think once that happens, and it would happen if we instituted something like this, then I think that would crawl out and become a model for the entire state, starting here at ground zero, the best city in the state. Now, I know I skipped over a lot of the questions on your your list. If, Miss Times, if you would please.
Sure, I'm gonna run through them again. Um, so uh, tell us about yourself, which you obviously were wonderful at. Uh, why are you interested in serving in the council? What would you like to see this as uh council accomplish? And how do you perceive the role of the council?
So uh, to address the last question on there, I believe clearly uh the the function of an individual councilman on councilperson on the council is to be part of the parliamentary process liberation. And I believe it is bringing your life history and your life story to the table to be able to say, well, when I lived in Salt Lake City, Utah, I saw this from doing this, and just contribute to that, contribute to the overall body of knowledge and understand when you have something to contribute, understand when you don't have something to contribute, and you need to listen, and you need to assimilate, and then you need to apply the scientific process to the information for you. And like Sandra said, arrive at a decision that's beneficial to the entire population of Prospect.
Any other questions from the council? Terry, you've you've got two minutes remaining, so you can keep talking, or you can wind it up however you, whatever you're thinking.
So Abraham Lincoln said, I'd rather people think I'm ignorant than to open my mouth and prove them right. And so I should probably just stop.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again for the five folks who put your names forward. It's uh, you know, I I knew it was a great group from reading this. I've heard I've known some of you before, but you've uh, you've you're very good representatives in the city. We've got terrific people throughout the city, but that's certainly the five of you are highly qualified expedition. So thanks so much for for coming in. I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the council to return to executive session.
Before we do that, Mayor, I would like all five of you all to know that we can only pick one person tonight. You all are amazingly qualified. The one thing that we all ask you is don't give up your enthusiasm for helping us in Prospect, because we need all the help we can get. That's what makes Prospect the city that it is. So please, if we don't select you, like we said, we can only pick one. Um, please continue to be interested and involved with us. Thank you.
Those are good remarks. Anyone else?
No, just thank you so very much for your interest, your time. Um, and as David said, you know, we can only pick one, and all of you are outstanding candidates. So we so appreciate you guys and your interest.
Thanks so much. Is there a motion to return to executive session?
Thank you all.
So move, under KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one F entry.
Is there a second to that motion? Uh, any, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. We're back in executive session. Chris, we we will we we will return, I should have said this to everyone out there, we'll return to open session. But let me, yeah, we need to, I should have made that clear. And we will return to this open session. Um, Chris, if you want to stay tuned in, you're, you're certainly invited to do that.
Perfect.
Thanks, John.
We're back in open session. Let's, I think, let's give Ron a second.
Give Ron a second to get the.
You gotta change the card on the screen there. Ron, let us know when you're ready.
And you are good to go.
Okay, for those of you who do not know me, I'm Chris Gorman, I'm the city attorney. And I'd just like to explain very briefly. We just talked about the strengths, weaknesses, mainly strengths, there were no weaknesses, the incredible candidates. But we really don't know who's gonna vote for who right now. I just wanted to explain that the first person that gets, all five candidate, all five council people will vote. But the first person that gets three votes is the one who is elected. If it, for instance, is one, one, two, one, then we'll have to keep doing it until somebody gets three votes. And I just want to be sure everybody understood that.
Mr. Mayor. I think what we've decided to do, or I know what we've decided to do, first of all, I want to again, sound like a broken record. But again, thank you all, superb list of folks, really exciting. And we, and I think every, I speak for everyone here that we hope you remain involved and become involved, yeah, more than than some of you already are. So with that said, the process that we're going to employ is it'll be a roll call vote. I'll call on the council people, they'll cast their vote. If after all five have voted, if someone's got three votes, they are elected to fill the vacancy. So with that said, a call on Frank Vulture.
Senator Leonard.
David Holt.
John Clark.
And John Evans.
John Clark.
Don Gibson.
John Clark.
And Sarah Hutz. Okay, so again, congratulations to everyone, thank you for putting your names forward, please stay involved, get involved. And John, congratulations, appreciate that. So is there any further business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Beating is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi, thank you all.
So much.